Good evening. Today is November 20th, 2025, and the time is 6:30 PM. I will now call the regular meeting of the ISD 191 Board of Education to order. Welcome to those of you who are here in the audience or those watching online. Thank you all for joining us. I would also like to extend a special welcome to Parvina Yusapova, one of our alternate student board representatives, who is here with us tonight for her first meeting. It's great to have you here.
Thank you.
Director Anderson. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Saxi. Seconded by Director Mickelson. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. We will begin this evening's meeting with an update report from Intermediate School District 917. Presenting the report this evening will be Dr. Michael Faber, Superintendent of District 917. Welcome, Dr. Faber.
Board chair members, student leadership, and amazing superintendent Dr. Daniels. Thank you for having me. My name's Mike Faber, the superintendent at ISD 917, going into my fourth year, and extremely proud of the work that we're doing, and looking forward to the work that's going to be accomplished. At 917, we believe that we are purposeful, personalized partners. Try to say that fast three times. If you're noticing many of our slides, there's, you will see lighthouses. We have an affinity for lighthouses because in a storm, especially when students are struggling, we believe that we have that light, and that lighthouse. We also believe that when it's not a storm, as beautiful and as elegant as a lighthouse is, that's what we expect education to be. We are that light in a storm. Okay. At 917, we practice, we belong to each other. We belong to each other. Imagine what you can get accomplished if you spend time living into that mission, that vision of we belong to each other, students and staff, and families, and business communities, and our business partners. How we rally around each other to make sure we're rallying around students and families, and staff when needed. So at 917, that's something you should see. We belong to each other, everyone, every day. As an intermediate, our programs are developed around our core values. These core values come from our strategic plan that included our students, our staff, our families, our business partners, getting feedback, and these nine core values we are expected to live in, and how we approach the work. Again, how we approach the work. You will see agendas, meeting agendas, that start and are aligned to our core values. And that was part of the suggestion of our board. Leslie Chesler is on our board, and she's outstanding. I know she's out today. She told me she wouldn't be here. But she's been a large part of developing our core values, and making sure, and ensuring that we're living into our core values. Now, this was at the very beginning of the year. We did this word cloud, and we asked this question about describe how we want our students and colleagues to feel every day. This was right after the shooting that took place in the Minneapolis area that touched us all. And you can see there in this word cloud, safe. We take the safety of our students, our staff, everyone involved, seriously. And this is just a great reminder for me as a leader. I have this up on my board. I share with all the leaders. But if you look deeper into this, this is the experience we want our students, our staff, our families to have when they're working with us, as well as our member districts. I forget you all. As well as our member districts. Now, this is just a reminder of the legislative statute of 1969 that we work with birth to age 22. And when a student turns 22, they begin, they age out of our program. At one point in time, that was 21, but pre-K to 22 is what we serve, and who we serve. If you have questions as I'm going through this, please ask. I want to make sure I get your questions answered as best I can, so don't hesitate. Here are nine member district board members. And mission, vision, and core values, all connected and intertwined together. Our mission being 917, quality equitable specialized programming. That's just not special ed, but that's for what we call our DECAL students, Dakota County Area Learning Center, which is our ALC. We have an ALC on site at Dakota County Technical College. Where students not only come there for our ALC program, but we also have a pathway where they can go right into middle college, which is exciting as well. You all are doing some great things, by the way, with some of your college program. I'm jealous, just so you know. Vision, again. Diverse pathways so that people can succeed, students can succeed, students and families, and once again, our core values. There are so many acronyms in special education. We just wanted to just share some of the acronyms that are there. So what does it mean if you're a SUN student? Students with unique needs, age 5 to 21. We've been meeting with a number of different districts. We want to establish a SUN program on this side of the community. We have one on what we consider the east side of the community, and we're looking to expand SUN programming on this side as well. So that's our biggest waiting list right now. So we're trying to make sure that we're meeting that need for all our students. And we've been discussing with Dr. Daniels about some opportunities as well. TESA, DHH, we have something called itinerant staff. And itinerant staff work in a number of our buildings. Deaf and hard of hearing is what we consider an itinerant staff, and working closely. Speech pathologists, we're working closely with member districts in partnership with member districts, and even in the same space and location as some of our member district sites. Partnerships. Excuse me. We have a strong partnership with not only the other intermediates. What I want to highlight here is the Minnesota Humanity Center. Our partnership with the Minnesota Humanity Center has brought to us something called Story Circles. And what we do when we sit on Circle, it's an indigenous practice, just share whatever the topic may be, and bring our staff together, bring our kids together, our students. We do Story Circles with our students. This has been one of the most important things that we have done, to get to know each other. In taking time to do Circle, everyone can contribute. We've also done Circle with our peer professionals, which I would highly recommend, and our teachers, and other groups as we go into negotiations, so that we can sit and listen and circle what are some of their priorities, and we can see that, and they can see that reflected in contracts, if we can do it. And again, it's a practice that we have, that we learned, we're trained through the Minnesota Humanity Center. I would just highly recommend it. The number of students from ISD 191 as of a couple of weeks ago, if you look at here over time, the numbers have dwindled just a bit. But in the past five years, our center-based services, about 208 students. Past five years, itinerant, like I discussed before, and some of our other center-based services, 742 students. And as of 2025-26, October 1, you have zero students in our DASH program, four DHH, five. Here are the numbers that are below, but we serve roughly 132 of your students. And we will, and I hope, to be serving more as we expand. Our alternative school, we have two sites. One is at Dakota County Technical College. The other one's the site we call North, and it's up in West St. Paul, kind of right off Robert Street. It's a smaller site. And you don't have any students there, but right now, we are serving about three of your students at DECALs. I know you have some also, have some alternative programming. But just to give you an idea of the students we're serving. As long as they get served, I'm okay, you know. And if there's anything we can do to enhance your programming, please let us know. But I want to make sure students are served. We have a career technical program, and it's nowhere near as strong as yours as of yet. And we're still enhancing the program. We've hired a new principal to jumpstart the program with the idea, the clear idea that we're not in competition with you. We want to complement what you're doing. So part of that complementing what you're doing is taking the nine member districts programs, which we're really studying this year, and then what's the next iteration? For us, we're looking at internships, being a school of service and service learning, and apprenticeships. So that's what we're looking at as we begin to transition some of the things we're doing at 917, in particular around career and technical programming. We're also looking to upgrade some of the programming that's here in place. Innovation. The expectation as we're redoing the work in career and technical education is that we will be a center of excellence. We discussed this a little bit about complementing the current programs, personal connections. We help students find spaces and places to grow and succeed, and helping our students recover credits, whether that be unlock, or finding additional solutions. Why we partner, DECALs, we can accelerate, we can accelerate the learning at DECALs. We're very intentional about that. Again, DECALs is our alternative school. Fresh starts, sometimes students just need a fresh start. Smaller setting, different location. EL services and clear graduation plans that we expect and work with every student much like yourself to have. That's 917. Questions?
Do members have any comments or questions?
Oh, wow. I didn't think I'd do that. Thursday night football's calling me. No, I appreciate, honestly, I appreciate the time. I think you have an amazing superintendent, and anything we can do for your district, for the students, that can complement the work that's being done here in Burnsville. Board member Chesler, she's just wonderful to work with. Anything we can do to help support you on the mission, please let us know. Don't hesitate to call. We'll be here. We'll be that lighthouse.
Thank you, Dr. Faber. Appreciate everything you're doing at 917.
Thank you. Be well.
Up next is a school report about Ron Elementary. Presenting the report this evening will be Dr. Chris Belmont, Assistant Superintendent, Brad Robb, Principal, and Lori Coiler, Learning Specialist and Building Leadership Team Member. Welcome, everyone.
Thank you, Chair Wurbe, Superintendent Daniels, members of the board. Thank you for having us for another school report. I'm happy to present the award-winning Ron Elementary School, starting off with our principal, Brad Robb.
Chair Wurbe, Dr. Daniels, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to share more about Ron Elementary. We are so proud of Ron Elementary and excited to share about the great things that is happening at our school. This past year, we were honored to be selected as one of the schools from Minnesota Elementary School Principals Association as a Minnesota School of Excellence. It's been quite the honor to be selected for this. We want to tell you a little bit about the process, and just how we got to this point, and just share what makes Ron excellent. We chose as a building leadership team to apply for this award because we know something great is happening at Ron, and we wanted to tell our story. We get to share the narrative of what's happening at Ron, and this was an opportunity to do that. But we also needed to learn from our community. Community is very important to us, connecting with our families, our students, our staff. How are we doing? What is going really well? What are some opportunities for growth? And then we developed a plan, a plan to, based on the feedback we received, and Lori Coiler, our Learning Specialist, will be sharing a little bit more about that. How are we going to best support Ron to become even better? Because we strive to be the best, and strive to continue to be better and better. And so we developed a plan, and we've been implementing that plan in response to what our families have shared. We're continuing the great work that's happening already, and we're just trying to make Ron even better. Now, I can share with you a whole lodge, but I think it's great to hear from our students and our staff. So we have a short little video for you, where they get to tell you why Ron is so excellent.
Good evening. Each of our 191 schools are filled with amazing staff members, students, and staff. However, this year, Ron Elementary renamed the Minnesota School of Excellence. Ron Elementary has strong leadership, both the extramarathon, to celebrate diversity intentionally, ages, girls, and the women. Hands on learning, and believe strongly, partnering with all of our families and community. Let's hear from our Ron staff, students, and staff about what we do at Ron that makes us excellent.
What makes Ron excellent for me is the amazing staff that I have met this year. As a new teacher, it can be hard, but everyone's very welcoming and kind.
The support that teachers have for students, teachers have for other teachers, and just the way that everyone supports each other throughout our building.
Ron is the best because there are kind staff members that help you learn.
Ron is the best because people are nice and we get to do fun activities.
Ron is the best because we learn and get smarter, and everyone is neighborly.
Ron is the best school because we have school leaders.
We value the diversity of the faculty.
So Ron is the best school because of Richmond Academy. And in Richmond Academy, you get to have fun playing games, and you get to create stuff.
If this didn't convince you that Ron Elementary, a Minnesota School of Excellence, please come for a visit and see for yourself. We'd love to have you.
Ron Elementary School is an incredible place, where we are always encouraged to
be curious, be creative, and achieve our goals.
I couldn't have said it any better. I'd like to introduce again Lori Coiler. She is a Learning Specialist at Ron Elementary, and also a member of our Building Leadership Team. And she'll share a little bit about what feedback we received from our families.
So during the application process, there were six standards, and we had surveys sent for each one of the standards, and some of them had more than one question or survey to answer under them. And so this first one addresses how strong the community confidence is in Ron's ability to strategically align its curriculum, not only with the district priorities, but also with evolving our needs, with the students' needs, the shifting demographics of the community. We hold a high value with our culture and we have shared high expectations, not only our students, our staff, and our community. We are actively fostering a school culture dedicated to continuous growth and improvement in learning performance. Our next slide was addressed under standard two for diverse communities. Ron continues to foster a learning culture that embraces change, encourages teamwork, supports creativity, and nurtures individual and collective growth. We believe that this is one of our biggest assets. The Ron community is committed to supporting lifelong learning and growth while embracing the diversity in its people, ideas, perspectives, and experiences. The learning culture at Ron Elementary continues to be adaptive and collaborative. We strive to find innovative ideas to meet the needs of all of our students. And then our last.
Yeah, last one.
Is under the statement that principals, teachers, and community members implement a balanced whole-child learning culture for all students, including in and out of school, learning experiences provided by the school and the community. The majority of our school community strongly supports our efforts to broaden the framework for child development beyond academics. The survey feedback was a positive perception of how well our school is doing that. With the most of them rating the implementation of our deeds above average. And that's another area where we continue to even increase more of that in and out experience of school learning within our community.
These are just three graphs of, I would probably say, over 25 questions, where we have graphs of all those questions. It was a very comprehensive application and process to gather this information from our families. Again, we learned so much about who we are, and the perspective that our community has brought to us. And it also validates the work that we are doing, and provides an opportunity for growth. There are words here on these slides, curiosity, creativity, achievement, community, engaging all families, supportive, high expectations, inclusive, and partnerships, that really stood out in the feedback that we received. When MESA, the Minnesota Elementary School Principals Association, reached out to me and shared the great news, they were very impressed with our work with our community. They could tell easily that that was so very important to us. They were also pleased that we actually asked permission to adjust some of these questions to ensure that they were responsive to our families, and that they were in a language that was easily understood. Sometimes we can get in the educational jargon and say lots of really big words. And so we were allowed to ensure that it was really clear what we wanted to hear from our families and what they were able to share. So, and they've actually adopted our language that we used for future applications. So we're proud of that work, and I'm proud of my leadership team, who spent a lot of time and energy for this. Again, we get to share how excellent Ron is. One of the, you heard this in the video, we are about curiosity, creativity, and we're also focused on high achievement. And I'd like to take a moment to share a little bit about some work that we have done on our school goal, and how we're kind of moving towards, well, we achieved our school goal last year, and then how we continue to see some great progress. This is a really wordy goal, so I'd like to explain it a little bit more. I'm not going to read it to you, but I'll just kind of divide it out and explain it. At Ron, we've looked at our data for several years, and we wanted to ensure that we are targeting our students' specific needs. And so we really drilled down on a big goal, and we divided the big goal into two different parts so we can ensure we're really targeting the needs of our students. The first part is we took our students who, in the fall, did not, or not at benchmark. They're not at grade level. We took that group, and we set a goal for them. And we said, we want 60% of our students, this is from, I'm sorry, we want to move them from 48% to 60%, reaching typical or aggressive growth. So that was a 12% increase that we put on ourselves. We're going to make this work. And we actually achieved 66%, which I'll share on the next slide.
Can I just add to that? Because I'm also very interested, I've got to know Principal Robb and his team's goal. So just to help work through that two and another term, less than half of the students in this category made that typical or aggressive growth in '23-'24. Well, they expanded that to almost two-thirds in one year.
Yeah. And thank you, Dr. Belmont. Additionally, we took the students in the fall who started at benchmark, and in alignment with Minnesota MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support, we wanted to ensure that our students stayed, remained at benchmark or above. And our goal was 90%. An increase from 86% from the previous year to 90%, and we got 90.54. And we'll continue to, we also are pushing our goal, the same goal this year, and increasing the percentages, because we know our students can achieve. And this goal has allowed us to really ensure that we're targeting our efforts to the students and what they particularly need.
As he's transitioning, I really love this goal model, and I'm continuing to work with other principals on it, just because, just to name it one more time, if you are below grade level and you make one year's growth, we can assume that you're going to continue to remain below grade level. So it's not good enough for our students that are below grade level in the fall to make just one year's growth. It needs to be more assertive than that, and that's what this goal tends to do. In turn, if you are at or above grade level, it's not good enough to slip backwards. You have to maintain or improve. So that's what this design does. It focuses his team.
This slide here just visually shows what I just shared. The red line there is where our goal was, and the meter stick there is how we've increased past that. Just wanted to share a few other academic achievement highlights with you. I'm just going to throw these up here, and we've got some great success in our first grade group. Where 90% of the students who started below benchmark, right, had typical or aggressive growth. Remember, our goal as a building was 60%, but in first grade alone, they achieved 90%. And then 100% of the students who started at benchmark remained at benchmark in our first grade. Last year, I had an opportunity, we had our fifth grade staff members here, Last year, I had an opportunity, we had our fifth grade staff members here to share about the the great co-teaching model that's happening in their class. And they continue to see significant success using that model. So I just wanted to highlight there that 95% of the students who were at benchmark or above remained there. But all of fifth grade students had 76% grew typically or aggressively, which is an impressive mark. And then one more note here is that the fifth grade MCA scores continue to rise from 49%, 49.3% to 60%, both 60% proficient in math and 60% proficient in reading. And those are significant jumps from the previous year. One other, oh, I'm sorry. And then in the reading specifically, MCA scores in fifth grade continue to be higher than the state average by 11 points. Again, that's shows some strength there, but it is all of the staff. We invest in students from K. So K1, the foundations that are laid from the beginning, our pre-K students all the way through fifth grade, we get to celebrate the success in our fifth grade because of all the work that's happened. Whether it's our learning specialists, our multilingual teachers, our advanced learning specialists, all play a part in the success of our students. And that's the story we wanted to share. One more just note, our multilingual program continues to be a highlight of our school and the work that's happening. And we see, again, great success, higher than state and district averages at Ron. We're doing some really great things and we just are pleased to be able to share that with you. And we are driven by our mission statement, which is an inclusive learning community working together to inspire curiosity, creativity, and achievement. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Principal Rob. Thank you, Ms. Coiler. Back to you, Chair.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from board members? Director Alt.
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. I just really appreciate hearing all of the great learning that's happening at Ron and the recognition that the school and the staff have received as a result. Just understanding, you know, the lengths that you're going to make sure that that our students, particularly the our ML students, you know, it's it's just wonderful to hear and to see. I'm a data person. Love to see just how advanced our students at Ron are in comparison to the state data. And so, thank you, thank you. Bring our gratitude back to the school. Really appreciate your hard work because what you do is not easy.
Thank you.
Director Mickelson.
Yeah, just also kind of a comment to piggyback on what Director Alt was saying is, you know, when you set these goals and obviously some aggressive kinds of goals that you really were shooting for to actually see the achievement and actually in some cases exceeding them is is really fantastic. And I guess maybe one quick question, if there is one thing you had to pick as far as, you know, what has really helped to achieve that? I mean, I know there's, you know, things that you're doing every single day, but, you know, if you had to pick one thing that that really helped you achieve those kinds of results, what would you pick? What would you say?
I think that when you come to Ron, you realize that we are a strong community. There is not a belief at Ron where we, how about this, we believe that all students are all of our students. And so, like I was sharing, our support staff, our special education staff, our learning specialists, we all believe in all of our students. And so if a child is getting extra support, that's all of us are providing extra support. It's not a, hey, you go take care of the support that this child needs. We work really well together. We've got this fifth grade co-teaching class. We have significant collaborative team meetings that happen every Tuesdays. We're, we also have data meetings where we are analyzing the data, our progress monitoring on Thursdays. And so it is, it's just, we all work really well together. I don't know if you can, if you can measure that, but I think our students are benefiting and our community as well.
I just add, because I'm involved with all the grade levels and our collaborative teamwork. And our students don't just work with me. They see the ML and Sped. So we are, as a team, collaborate together to say what's best for that student. And then they don't just have one teacher. They have many teachers.
Fantastic. Kind of sounds like, you know, a lot of synergy is happening within a school that really are enhancing the experience. So congratulations. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, I thank you for coming and presenting. I think you've set the bar really high and everyone else needs to meet up with Ron. Meet to Ron's standards. So I appreciate all the hard work that your team has put into all the the data that they've they've studied and all the time they've spent in doing all this work to get the results that you've gotten. So appreciate appreciate your time. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Our next report will be on the Early Childhood, Early Intervention, and Special Education from Birth to Age Five program. Presenting this report will be Amy Pietrowski, Director of Student Support Services, Kristi Oskerson Wanzek, Special Education Supervisor, and Sarah Erbys, and Brittany Smith, Early Childhood Special Education Teachers. Welcome, everyone.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Chair Wur, Dr. Daniels, and members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity. Tonight, we're eager to present the Early Childhood Special Education, or ECS, team, which serves as foundational entry point for our youngest learners. We are excited to share the significant progress and success that we are seeing with our earliest learners and their families as they begin the journey in our district. I would like to turn the presentation over to Kristi Wanzek, the supervisor of ECSE and the dedicated ECSE team.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Wur, Dr. Daniels, and members of the board, including Parvita. Thank you. So I'm Kristi Wanzek. I've been with the Early Childhood Program since 1998. I kind of left for a little bit, went and did some, got some experience in the middle school level. And then I was just, that's my passion is early childhood. And we'll kind of tell you why and kind of explain that. So we are honored to be able to present this information about our ECSE program, Birth to Age Five. So as of today, we have 303 active students who have been identified and qualified for early intervention or three-to-five services. So everyone has an IFSP or an IEP. And that is including our VPK that are in the elementary sites. And that's about 65 that are in our VPK program right now. So this evening, we hope to give you a snapshot of and an understanding of our Part C, Early Intervention, and our Part B, Services Ages Three to Five, and all the ways we support our youngest learners. And I'm going to introduce the two people on my right and my left. This is Sarah Erbys. He's, she, you want to introduce yourself?
I am one of the seven early interventionist teachers on our team.
Okay, go ahead.
Brittany Smith, I'm the three-to-five ECSE teacher here at Diamond Head.
Yep. And Brittany is also on the building leadership team for the for this for the program. So why early intervention matters?
Well, we know when kids are from birth to three, we know that is the most critical period of brain development. So it's really important for our team to capitalize on this critical window of of growth and development and establish those strong neurological pathways. We know that our program is a preventative approach and we address developmental concerns proactively. We often reduce the need for more intensive costly interventions later in a child's educational career. Our program is legally mandated by the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. Our district's commitment to early intervention is rooted in federal law, ensuring services for these youngest learners. So we have a core belief that every child deserves the best possible start. And early intervention empowers families to help their children with understanding how they learn best so that they can thrive.
And just to know our, we have child find at this age. We need to find the children because they don't, they are not at a school, they are not at something. And so we have a way of doing that. And so how we get our families and and those learners is the Help Me Grow website. So there's Help Me Grow referrals, medical community refers sometimes, child protection, social services, childcare providers, daycares, parents, family members, public health nurses, early head start, and 191 Community Ed. Those are some of the examples of people that send us the referrals. And so from the time of that referral, the the staff have, this is our birth to three students, they have 45 calendar days to complete a screening, complete the evaluation, and have that planning meeting. So that is a tight window when you're trying to get ahold of families. And so that is the the legal mandate to try to get that. That's the maximum amount of time they give us. So Birth to Three is really family-centered. So this is an approach that we used to have go out and do more like the the service provider would come out and they just kind of work with the student. Well, that has shifted over the last, maybe?
Ten years.
Ten years. So it's more of a coaching model. So everything is family-centered. Every child has an IFSP if they've had identified as having that need. And most of the the environments that everything, the services are provided are either in the home, they could be in daycares, they could be on a playground, they could be wherever, they could be out shopping. But it's with that family and their natural routines and what they do every day. So and it's a team approach. So that team includes two people from two different disciplines, either a speech therapist and an occupational therapist and a teacher. So there's just those three disciplines there that kind of work together. And so, yeah. And it's their first exposure to the district. I know when I asked the the staff what they wanted to relay is like, they are the first introduction to the district. So when they meet those teachers and those staff members, they're relaying, you know, that positive, you know, approach and getting them acclimated to that school environment. So it's really important. And that IFSP is really based on family's priorities. It's not like, oh, he's low in this and we are going to work on this. It's not driven by the the primary service provider. It's it's family-driven. So what are you struggling with? Maybe it's the child screams when he goes in the bathroom or, you know, just a variety of things.
I would, I would, yeah, I would add, you know, it's not uncommon. If a parent is having trouble at the grocery store, we can go to the grocery store with the parent and help them to kind of observe how it's going and get to learn a little bit more about what that family is experiencing so that the strategy, we want our strategies to be meaningful because we know that the real intervention happens when we're not there. We need the interventions to be activities that the parents can practice when we go home.
So the model is really a coaching model. So they work with the families to give them ideas, you know, watch how the parents, they model for the parents, and then the parents tries it. It's just a really cool approach. I went on a home visit today to do an observation. And if you ever get a chance to do that, I highly recommend it because it is, there's a lot of work that's put in when they're little. So, yeah. So one, our impact, what is the impact of early childhood intervention? So it's that we're preparing for their next educational step. So maybe that is coming into our three-to-five program, or maybe they just are preparing them for preschool, just a regular preschool. And the children receive early intervention are more likely to enter kindergarten with foundational skills, reducing the need for intensive supports later on. Every dollar spent on early intervention saves multiple dollars in the future for special education costs and the district costs. And empowered families are better equipped to support their child's journey. And so I think that's a really important thing that, you know, our our staff offers the families. Okay, back to the numbers. Okay. So enrollment. So our programs, both of them, Birth to Three and Three to Five, they grow over the year. So they start out smaller and by the end of the year, everyone is screaming and saying, I'm too busy, I'm too busy. So I hear it. And they've done such a great job. But like, as an example, from in 2003, 2004, they started the year with 88 students and then they ended with 101. And, you know, there's always move in, move out. So we take that into effect, too. Then 24, 25, there was 93 to start and then 126 to end the school year. So the staff were feeling it and we did hire more staff last year. And so hopefully the team is feeling supported that way. Another benefit of early intervention is sometimes at three, they may not need anything after that. So once they turn three, they need to qualify under Part B Services. So that's the three-to-five services. And so sometimes they don't even need that evaluation. So in 24, 25, we had 18 students who did not need services after three because of that early intervention. And this year, so far, we already have 14. So they didn't continue on. So we, they've done a great job with those students after their third birthday. So far this year, we have 105 receiving early intervention as of today. I'm I'm just really proud of what the staff has been doing. And I'm just honored to be able to work with this staff. But just to give you an idea of just our Birth to Three team and what it looks like, we have seven Birth to Three teachers. We have four speech-language pathologists, two occupational therapists, a physical therapist, a social worker, psychologists when needed. So that staff is about 15 people. And then we'll kind of move on to our three-to-five-year-olds. So again, once again, it's a legal mandate, part of idea for Part B Services for Special Education and making sure we are giving those students services for that needed. Our delivery models, we have a variety of delivery models. We have integrated preschool classrooms. We have specialized just early childhood, small group classrooms. We have itinerant services. We try to do that as much as possible. We go out to daycares and if they're already in a daycare or a preschool, then that is where we provide the service because we don't want to take them away from that because too many transitions is not a good thing. And VPK, we have voluntary pre-kindergarten, if I'm sure you're all aware of that. So it's, we have a program here that's all day as well. And so some of our students, you know, the specialized students are in there. And then there's eight element, all eight elementary buildings has a VPK program. So they have a morning class and an afternoon class. So we have about up to four to five students in each class. And that's kind of what that looks like. And just once again, it's that first exposure to the district. So some students aren't identified till between three and five. So that's, once again, the, they they kind of are the face of the district when they come in. So the state mandate tracks student progress. So there is something called the Child Outcomes Summary? That our staff completes when a student qualifies, they complete that to show progress. And so that's our way to identify children and know where they start and how, what the intervention does, and then what their skills are in the three areas of social, emotional skills, knowledge and skills, and and then their ability to meet their own needs. So those are the three measurements that they look at. We're hopefully in closing the gap with these children. We ensure that children exit the program functioning as close to age expectations as possible, which significantly improves their chances of academic success and reduces the need for extensive support in the elementary school. The return on investment, again, this is the same thing for the three-to-five program. A successful ECSE program means entering kindergarten ready to learn, benefiting the district's overall achievement metrics, and reducing future special education expenditures. Okay, so just to give you an idea of what happens, so the referrals that we get, so in 2023, there were 296 referrals for our Birth to Three program and 268 for our Three to Five program. So when that happens, every single one of those referrals needs to start with an in, with a screening intake. And then that might go to evaluation and it might not. So as you can see throughout the years, So, as you can see throughout the years, last year was about a little bit less for Birth to Three, but a little bit higher for Three to Five. So, it's a really, we have to address each one of those referrals, and it's a lot. So, and our staff does a great job. And then, in the month of November already, so this year already through October, there was ninety-eight Birth to Three and a hundred-and-fifteen Three to Five. And in November, we've already had sixteen Birth to Three and thirteen Three to Five that our staff are checking out. Okay. Three-year-olds in our classrooms upstairs. So, this just kind of shows, once again, for Three to Five, it grows over the year. It doesn't start in, you know, like in whatever, in elementary school, you know kind of where you're at, but we never know where we're going to get, you know, how many identified students we're going to have. So, that does grow over the year. So, as you can see, twenty-three to twenty-four, there was a growth of over forty-six students. And then, twenty-four to twenty-five, there was a growth of forty students. So, that's like, you know, it's hard to staff that, especially right now with hard-to-find early childhood special education teachers and to get that license in our building. But we do the best we can for that, so, yeah. VPK, so this is kind of interesting because this is all of our students that are in our voluntary pre-kindergarten. This was kind of what in twenty-two, three, twenty-four where it started and then where it ended, kind of that same thing. It doesn't stay the same. It gets bigger, always. And so far this year, we have sixty-five in our VPK program throughout the district. Yeah. So, you can see that kind of growth in early childhood. It's kind of unpredictable. This, once again, I work with amazing staff, and they are just, we have very experienced. We've had our, some of our speech-language pathologists have been in the districts over twenty years. So, that's been awesome. Many of our teachers have been here a very long time, some of our OTs. So, it's just been nice to know that there are people who know our program and work really hard and like to stay there, and they really enjoy working with the rest, with each other. So, as you can see, there are nine ECSE teachers at DEC. So, that is upstairs, and there's one person downstairs, and then ECSE, oh, nope, upstairs is nine. These are the, this is the three-to-five team, nine VPKK teachers. So, last year, Director Petrowski brought on a model where those ECSE teachers were also going to be doing kindergarten because their license goes to age seven so that those children who are VPK go on to the next level, and they have that support and they already know that person. So, that has been a really good model. So, this is our second year with that. Educational assistants at DEC, we have fourteen educational assistants at VPK, eight. Speech-language pathologists in our three-to-five is five, psychologists, two, OTs, one, physical therapist, one, social worker, one, school nurse. And then, we have a BCBA, which is the Board Certified Behavior Analyst. So, we have a total of fifty-two staff that are part of the ECSE three-to-five team. Okay, so, here's our, here's the quote I looked up, and I thought, you know what? This was a good one for our program. "So, many things can wait, the child cannot. Today, their bones are being formed, their blood is being made, their senses are being developed. To them, we cannot say tomorrow."
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from board members? Director Anderson.
I got you on that one. So, I did, just a comment. ECSE was my first introduction to 191, and it's the reason why I have loved 191 all these years. And the idea of like your Birth to Three going into homes and going to the grocery store with families, it just, it took me back to my experience when my kids were two and three and saying, but you don't get to see when they're having meltdowns because they like you and they like being here and they're having fun. And so, that experience of coming along with the things they don't like to do instead of having to trigger a meltdown so you can see it is so nice and so great, and I really appreciate the work you're doing. Thank you.
Director Mickelson.
Yeah, kind of to piggyback on what Director Anderson said is that, you know, I think parents of children who are in the ECSE class, they're kind of trained to advocate for their children, and so, they are less hesitant to stay quiet. And so, yeah, parents talk. And, you know, and so, you know, in different districts and that live all around, and they have ways of connecting. And so, you know, the fact that this is one of the initial kind of exposures to the school district, you know, being able to have the kind of positive messaging and the positive experiences that you give all of the families that you serve really is a great advertisement for the district. So, thank you for all of your work and being able to be that for our district. And, you know, because again, you know, parents talk and, you know, news gets around for the kinds of experiences that they have. So, I know there's been lots of very positive kinds of stories that are out there. And so, again, just thank you.
Director Alt.
Thank you. I do have a question this time. We had a joke about whether I would have questions for this meeting. I do have questions. Boy, having help with a young child in a grocery store, best kept secret. I wish I had known when my kids were young. But seriously. My questions are really more about the psychologists. I had noticed, I believe it was with the Birth to Three, the psychologists were available as needed, but then, I think it was Three to Five, there are two. Can you explain the difference?
Yep. So, sometimes Birth to Three, there are certain tests, especially for autism, that we, our psychologists are more experienced in. So, the two that are, we do have for Three to Five, they are the ones that provide that. So, when they need to do that testing, and it's called the Autism Diagnostic Observation Scale or other tests that they had given or observations that they need to do or parent interviews. And if they give them that educational category, then a lot of times, they are involved.
Got it. And I guess the, kind of a follow-up question, because going back a few years, I don't remember how many, there had been a past practice where psychologists tended to mostly be kind of paper pushers and kind of in their offices. That's no longer the case. There had been a shift to making the, you know, ensuring that the psychologists are really productive members of the school community and kind of doing what we want them to do. Can you speak to that?
Yeah. So, I will say that they're still involved with all those initial evaluations. So, they're very busy, and we really only have a point-six and a point-eight psychologist. So, it's busy, and they're on pretty much all of the three-to-five evaluations and many of the reevaluations if they are or turning-three evaluations. So, they do provide what we call a stat process. And so, when staff are struggling with a student or having, needing people to kind of come together, kind of the meeting of the minds, they do run that on Thursday mornings with our BCBA and the social worker. And then, that classroom teacher, whoever's, you know, to kind of talk about like, what can we do to help this student?
Gotcha. And then, you also mentioned, and this was actually a question that I already had written down, but you kind of spoke to it overtly, staffing, right? That's with the demand that we have coming in with our students and our families, staffing continues to be a challenge. How are you managing that?
Every single day, it's a challenge.
We get really creative.
It's just hard.
Yeah, especially here at DEC, we are all, like all of us teachers and EAs, we're really helping each other. So, if someone's in need, we go down the hall and be like, hey, do you have, are you short kids today? Not short, but have less kids today? Can you send some help? Or we all have walkies, so we're walking for help. And anyone is willing and ready to jump in, even with placing children, we're getting, we're getting creative. Birth to Three team, a lot of times, you'll see them coming down the hallway when help is needed.
We have, you know, we have kids transitioning into the three-to-five program, and when we know the students and we know that the classrooms need support, it just makes sense for us to step in if we're able to. So, we really do try to, I mean, we are, we, our team communicates very well together to try to help out wherever we might be needed at any given time.
I think educational assistance are the hardest right now. I yesterday had five interviews, three no-shows, so.
Wow.
Yeah, it's a constant job. So, it's, it's hard.
It is hard.
And so, we're missing a couple at ECSE. But our staff at ECSE, though, also are going out to buildings. I know we've had some go to Gideon Pond on days where we're down students. I try as best I can to go around the building and see if anybody's low on students, and so, we try to share as much as we can with the rest of the district.
Yeah. So, always, always trying. Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. So, I was curious about like the referrals. Are you seeing more of referrals from inside the community or outside the community or like primarily where the referrals come from?
I would say most of our referrals come from doctors, pediatricians, well, child visits. We get a fair amount. Some students qualify for our program if they have even like low birth weight. So, there are some conditions that may predispose a child to having a delay, so they may automatically qualify for our program in that way. We do get a fair amount of referrals from parents as well.
The community.
Grandparents even. Anyone can make a referral. A lot of people don't realize that, that anyone can make a referral through Help Me Grow.
So, I was, that was one of my questions. I was wondering if they came from doctors due to like if they're finding out about autism disorder diagnoses or that type of?
Yep. And then, many times, we're saying you might want to get an outside diagnosis because ours is just a educational category. It's not, it's not the medical diagnosis. So, we often refer the other way, too, just saying, you know, you might want to get this checked out. And so, they can get other services in the community or, you know, in, you know, therapy centers and different places.
Right. So, yeah, because I was wondering about kind of the collaboration between the medical staff and then the educational staff as far as like the, you know, servicing the student because obviously, it's a holistic approach because we're, you know, they need more than just like the provider's care and the educator's care. It's kind of like a two-phase, a two-pronged approach, you know, because of the type of services they need. So, I'm just wondering if like that is going on, like behind the scenes kind of?
I think that's a big part of the Birth to Three service provider's job is to help the parents with resources. They may not know what's available to them.
Right, okay.
Yes, that is a big part of what they do. They give them.
With their permission. We don't talk to anyone. Yes, obviously, it's all PHI and stuff like that. Yes. But, no, just, and just making sure that that's all going on, but yeah.
Yeah, in therapy centers, we do do a release so that we can share information about what's working there and versus what's working at school. And we may find, you know, things that are working at school that, you know, we can share with them as well.
Right, okay. Thank you so much for your report. Thanks for coming.
Yep, thank you.
Next on our agenda, we will receive a report about Burnsville-Egan-Savage Transition. Sharing the report this evening will be Amy Petrowski, Director of Student Support Services, Dr. Jennifer Midendorf, Program Supervisor Casey Anderson, Best Teacher and Work Coordinator Eric Chrysus, Best Work Coordinator and Project Search Instructor. Welcome.
All right. Well, good evening, Chair Wur, Dr. Daniels, and members of the board. Thank you again for this opportunity for us to share what we do in special education. Tonight, once again, I'm delighted to share the impactful work that the Burnsville-Egan-Savage Transition Program, or as they like to call themselves, the BEST Program. This program is critical final step with our K-12 experience dedicated to supporting our eighteen-plus students with disabilities and their families as they transition into adult life, employment, and community engagement. So, we're excited to present the success and outcomes that they're prepared as they prepare for their young adults and meaningful futures. I would like to turn the presentation over to the Best Supervisor, Dr. Midendorf, and the members of the BEST Team, who will walk you through our recent achievements and our program goals. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Wur, Dr. Daniels, and members of the board, and Parbina. I am Jennifer Midendorf, the Best Supervisor, and I have with me Casey Anderson. She is our Work Coordinator, and Eric Chrysus is our other Work Coordinator, and also, he is the instructor for our Project Search Program that our students participate in as interns. We're excited to share an overview of our program for you tonight. And I have my notes that I'm going to stick to because if you know me, once I start talking about the program, I can talk forever. So, I know that you guys want to get out of here tonight, so I'm going to stick to my notes. All right, so, the BEST vision aligns with our district core values, caring community, cultural proficiency, future readiness, inclusive partnership, and student agency. Each student at BEST has the space and the opportunity for their voice to be heard while receiving equitable experiences to access the community through work-based learning experiences and community-based outings that focus on building independent living skills. Our student population at BEST is diverse, which makes the learning experience even more valuable because students learn how to interact with others who have different disabilities or some similar disabilities with different characteristics while also learning ethnic racial differences. The staff at BEST are innovative educators who are consistently looking for new opportunities for our students to learn about the community and how to be active and contributing members of the community. Casey and Eric work to find all sorts of work experiences that support all of our students so they can improve their job soft skills as well as awareness, interests, and the different processes to obtain employment or other interests that they have after they leave BEST. Our BEST community is dedicated to supporting the outcomes of our students in addition to helping our Burnsville-Egan and Savage community see and value people who have disabilities. Every day, we get to see the amazing things our students do, and we want to share that with our school district and the broader community. And so, one of the focuses of our school improvement plan is on increasing our students' transition skills, which includes workplace readiness, financial literacy, health and wellness, personal care and hygiene, community and transportation, self-advocacy and awareness. This is documented and measured in our school improvement plan, and then data is collected daily, which Casey will address in some upcoming slides. We're also working on family engagement by focusing on our open houses. So, one, our spring open house for new students and families. And then, we have our fall open house, and that's for all of our students and families. Over the years, we've found that there are a number of new families who are unsure of what the BEST program is and why their students will be attending it instead of graduating. And so, I'm collaborating with the high school special education supervisor, Kristi Pope, to establish protocols. So, staff from BEST are involved earlier in the IEP planning process for when it is determined that student, a student will be attending BEST. So, we can increase or foster a stronger collaboration between the students, their families, and then the high school team, and then our transition team. In addition, we want, our goal is to familiarize students and families with our program prior to the start of the school year so they really understand what the program is, the purpose of it, because with the student not getting their diploma, that can be a hard realization. So, we really want them to understand the purpose of the program and the goals and be a part of that planning process for the students. All right, so, this next slide just shows the number of students who have enrolled at BEST. And when Kristi was presenting on the early childhood side, and she talked about how over the year, over the school year, numbers go up, for us, it's kind of the opposite. Sometimes... Sometimes we see numbers go down because students may graduate mid-year. It really depends on when they reach their goals. And we've had students who have started the year and they've graduated in October. Um, we had a student who um started a job towards the end of the previous school year, and he did excellent through the summer, he was full-time, and his boss promoted him, and he came back to school and he had met his IEP goals, and they, they wanted to keep him on full-time, and they wanted to give him another promotion, and we didn't want to hold them back from that, and the team met and um it, he, you know, he was ready to graduate, so that, that does happen. So our numbers kind of goes the other way sometimes. But over time, um, our students, uh, we've had students who have open enrolled with us as well, and so um five out of the six of our students and families this year um shopped around for transition programs, and they came to BEST. Uh, and then last year, two out of four um families um who were um open enrolled did the same. So students um who come to BEST have been identified as qualifying, qualifying for special education services. They are students who have not met their individual education plan goals or IEP goals. They are students who demonstrate a continued need for transition services. They are students who have finished their high school, um, students who are 18 to 22 years old, um, and then when they exit BEST, they graduate, and that's when um they meet their IEP goals, or they age out at 22 years old, whichever comes first. While attending BEST, students work towards their IEP goals, which focus on the transition skills, and we know all of us, um, all of our students come to us at different uh levels of readiness, so their plan is individualized, their experience at BEST is dependent on their needs, uh, which is identified in their special education evaluation and IEP, um, their interests, which are identified in several inventories, questionnaires, and then job sites that they try out, and also their goals for post-secondary education and or employment and independent living. What is not individualized is that the majority of students attend from 8:00 AM till 2:30 PM, we follow the high school calendar, all students take seminar courses within the program, and the, uh, they learn specific skills, and they go to job sites with a BEST coach to apply what they have learned. And in the courses, we used evidence-based curriculum that aligns with the Project Search Internship, the national standards and quality indicators for transition, and the pre-employment transition services also referred to as PRIETS, which comes from vocational rehabilitation services. The curriculum and instruction at BEST also supports the attainment of the skills and competencies of the 191 profile of a learner. I will turn it over to Casey, who will talk more about the work experiences that our students have.
Thank you. Our students gain valuable hands-on work experience through three in-house job sites designed to build employability skills in a supportive setting right here at Diamond Head. The first is the Core Lab, which stands for Career Occupational Readiness Experience, where students complete real job requests from across the district, including tasks such as making copies, filing, data entry, and laminating. These experiences help students practice accuracy, time management, and responsibility while contributing meaningful work to our school community. The next is the Production Lab. This creative workspace allows students to design, produce, and sell handmade items at local craft fairs and in our coffee shop. This year's featured projects include a variety of diamond dot artwork and greeting cards, helping students develop craftsmanship, attention to detail, and entrepreneurial skills. We are actually having our second annual boutique on December 1st, where you can see all of these items um in our coffee shop. Last but not least, for our in-house job sites is the BEST Coffee &amp; More Coffee Shop, which is right across the hall. Um, our students run a coffee shop located in the campus cup, which gives them the opportunity to practice customer service skills while serving snacks and drinks to staff and visitors. We'd love for you to stop by Monday through Friday between 8:30 AM to 12, or 12:30 to 1:30 to see our students in action. Um, next is our job sites in the community, where students gain real-world experience through several community-based job sites. These partnerships allow students to apply their skills in authentic workplace settings while developing independence, teamwork, and professionalism. These community-based job sites include 191 cafeterias, where students assist district food service staff by packing breakfast kits for students, helping ensure meals are ready to distribute each morning. Another one is Embassy Suites in Bloomington. Um, at this hospitality site, students work in the housekeeping facility, gaining experience in folding towels, pillowcases, and linens, while learning about quality standards and workplace efficiency. And another is Chap Thrift Store in Burnsville, where students support daily store operations by locating empty hangers and sorting them by size, building organizational and problem-solving skills in a fast-paced retail environment. Some other ones we have are Ebenezer Senior Living, where we have two job sites. One is a full-day placement on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, um, with students working in the resident coffee shop from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and the other runs Monday through Friday, where students spend 90 minutes stocking supply closets. And the Arbor's, which is right across the street from Ebenezer, where students clean tables after breakfast and set up table settings and menus for lunch. Um, and the newest addition is actually the Burnhaven Library, um, which is new this year, where students re-shelve books and assist with various cleaning tasks as needed. We are grateful for our community partnerships that provide students with valuable opportunities to build their employability and soft skills. In addition to building their skills, these experiences help our students learn more about their interests as well as the work environments they feel most comfortable in. They learn quickly when they are in environments that are too overwhelming, where they couldn't be able to focus or complete job requirements. At job sites, students build their employability soft skills. Our awesome job coaches track 20 soft skills such as hygiene, problem-solving, motivation, frustration tolerance, and accepting feedback, and input data weekly to guide instruction and support individual um student growth. Here, you can see a side-by-side comparison of a student in their first year at BEST, which is in the red, and their second year at BEST in the blue. They have made great progress in accepting constructive feedback, hygiene and grooming, and appearance, and motivation and initiative. This data is important to use for the student to reflect on the areas that they have improved on and areas they need to continue focusing on. We use this information for planning instruction in the seminars and for writing IEP goals and objectives. These skills are tracked daily at the student's job site. Once they've mastered skills at a job site, the team meets to discuss starting a new job site, to see how the student does with transferring these skills to a new environment with different responsibilities and expectations. So next is about partnerships and outcomes.
So um when students leave BEST, our goal is that they will have the skills to participate in competitive, integrated, and integrated employment, and live as independently as possible and enjoy social activities with people around um their similar age. And um so they also, we will also want them to have access um through the state, the county, and other agencies because of the amount of services that they can receive. And we know that it can be very overwhelming to families and to students because of the amount um that's out there, which is a good thing, but we know that it can be very overwhelming. And so our goal, and it shows in um this Venn diagram, is our goal is to bring everybody together with the student in the center, um, so that we are all planning for that student. Um, so we have one goal when that student leaves. And then after the student graduates, the county and Voc Rehab um will remain with them, and so continue on the services they need, and then Voc Rehab will stay on with them for a period of time, for however long they need. And so we just feel with everybody at the table, we can align our work to make sure that we are all working to ensure the success of that student, because when they leave us, we want to know that they have a plan, that they're not going to go home and sit on the couch, because they've worked hard while they've been with us, they've learned a lot, and we don't, we want them to go, go and show what they, what they've got. All right. And then um just how we measure student success is progress towards IEP goals and objectives, um, our SIP data, student experience based on their surveys, our IEP meetings, and then our continued partnerships within the community.
Project Search, so I'm Eric, and Project Search has been in our district, this is the third year, and I took over last year, so it's my, into my second year, and I'm wearing my uniform. We wear scrubs all day, every day, because we're fully immersed in the hospital, and we want to have interns fit in and staff model that too. So Project Search is a collaboration among our school district, county, state agencies, and M Health Fairview Ridge's Hospital. Together, we provide a full-year work-based internship for young adults with disabilities who are finishing transition services. The program began in 96 at Cincinnati Children's Hospital, and has grown into a large, successful model with just under 800 sites across the US and extending out into other countries. Our main goal is to help interns move into competitive, integrated employment soon after completing the program. That means the jobs are permanent, pay at least minimum wage, offer regular weekly hours, 16 hours per week, and take place in typical workplaces alongside coworkers with and without disabilities. So our interns stay enrolled in the BEST program and follow the regular BHS high, uh, BHS schedule, and each day includes an hour and a half of classroom learning, followed by five hours of hands-on training in different hospital departments. Over the year, they complete three 10-week rotations, doing at least two in different departments, ideally three, but sometimes there's a good fit, and they might do a second round and level up to some more tasks and challenges and skills. Interns also have six planning meetings with their full support team, families, county and state partners, employment services, department managers, and school staff, to keep everyone aligned and on progress with the student planning and employment goals. And we partner with a wide range of hospital departments, and our opportunities have continued to grow over time. As we build stronger relationships with departments and managers and staff, and as interns demonstrate their capabilities, the hospital has gained a deeper understanding of our program's purpose and how to effectively support individuals with disabilities. And this collaboration has allowed us to expand roles, tasks, and departments available to our interns. So this slide shows um the data from the students I had last year. We do a Voc Fit assessment four times, there's a baseline, and then after each rotation we do one, so this is all of our students together. Purple is the beginning, we did back in September, light blue was at the end of May. So employment outcomes, in the past two years, 70% of interns who completed the program have gained competitive employment. While the hospital isn't required to hire interns, we're strengthening those connections, and M Health Fairview has now committed to a system-wide goal of hiring 50% of Project Search interns. We have had students hired at the hospital, and also retail stores, sports facilities, and then some other areas in the Fairview system. One graduate is still actively job hunting with support from Accord, the employment service provider. So we track, after they graduate, we have monthly meetings, and we still track the graduates for nine months, and still plan with, they're done with us, but we, we partner with those other agencies and supports. It's a Project Search thing, just to kind of make sure there's a handoff and it leads somewhere. Um, feedback, the, the hospital's staff is, is critical to this, and try to build a network relationships with them, and we've gotten some good feedback, or one of the feedbacks from a department manager in one of the rehab departments is, "Our team has been incredibly blessed by our connection with Project Search program, an opportunity many of us didn't even realize we needed. This program has not only opened doors for individuals with different learning abilities, but has also transformed the way we approach our work. It has challenged us to think differently, communicate more effectively, and adapt in ways that ensure inclusivity for all. Through Project Search, therapists, patients, and their loved ones have gained a deeper appreciation for the potential in every individual. The program has brought a renewed sense of purpose, a brighter outlook, and a reminder of why we do what we do. In a field that often presents challenges, Project Search has been a reminder, or sorry, been a source of sunshine and hope, inspiring us every day. We are grateful for the lessons it has taught us and the impact it continues to have on our team."
So first, questions? Um, are there any comments or questions from board members? Director Alt, oh, oh, no.
Uh, just a really wonderful report, thank you. I really appreciated the feedback, it's just wonderful to hear how our program and our students are kind of shifting the mindset of folks even in the healthcare profession. That's, that's really great.
Uh, yes, I concur with Director Alt. Um, I've just really enjoyed going to the BEST graduations every year, it's just really um heartfelt to hear all the graduates from the program. Um, I always enjoy hearing their stories and them talking about their accomplishments, and they are always so proud, and I'm proud that we have this program in our district, um, because I hear them, the parents even talking about when they've, you know, looked at other programs and what makes ours better, um, from other, other programs, and I feel um like blessed that we have that in our district. So thank you for having, you know, such a great program, and all the hard work that you guys do to make it that, that way. So I really appreciate it, thank you.
And I just want to say too, you know, thank you for that, by the way, but I do want to say that the team at BEST truly is the best, and I know I joke about that, but they really are, the, the staff, all the staff there, um, my work coordinators, they really, they, they're always looking for more for our students, they're always looking for um more opportunities, um, and, and they have high expectations for all of them. And so I believe that that's really what has made it what it is, and, and the opportunities and the results that we see, um, I, it's, I believe it's, it's the staff and just how dedicated they are, so.
It's great to hear, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Up next, we will receive reports from board members regarding board committees, appointments, and school assignments. Would anyone care to start things off? Director Mickelson?
Um, the Legislative Committee met on Tuesday, the 18th, and we hadn't met for a few months because we were kind of waiting for some of the legislative platform suggestions and, or at least the legislative platforms from AMSD, uh, the Association of Metro uh School Districts, and also MSBA, uh, the Minnesota School Board Association. Unfortunately, MSBA hasn't kind of released their legislative platform as of yet, so uh we're still waiting for that, but we were able to kind of review what our platform was from last year, and to go over the AMSD, AMSD's platform, to kind of see where things may align, what things we want to repeat this year, and had some discussions around that. Uh, and so hopefully by our meeting uh in December, we will have the MSBA platform um so that we can then uh kind of blend everything together and kind of have a suggestion to be able to come and discuss with the board uh very soon. We're really hoping to be able to be ready for a workshop and bring something before the board um in late December to January. the board in late December to January.
Director Alt.
Policy. Met Tuesday, and we're bringing forward some new, some policies with revisions in December. Given timing of where the committee typically meets, we will not be meeting again until Tuesday, January 20th. And the negotiations committee met today and actually continues to meet. Chair Hume is continuing to meet with district leadership and the BEA's negotiations team. And that ends my report.
All right. Thank you. Now, we will move to the business portion of the board meeting, starting with the consent agenda. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved for separate consideration. Do board members wish to remove any items from the consent items? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Anderson.
Second.
Seconded by Director Saxi. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. We only have one item under new business this evening. We are being asked to approve the PSEO contract for Inver Hills Community College. Presenting the recommendation this evening will be Dr. Chris Belmont, Assistant Superintendent. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair. Superintendent Daniels, members of the board. I'm back with another contract to support our concurrent enrollment and PSEO options. Our AA degree program, now exclusively housed at Burnsville High School, does rely on, I believe it's according to, thank you to Dr. Funston and AP Noble, because I believe we're down to just one course, that's a science course that's needed to be taught on our campus but by an Inver Hills Community College staff member. So this contract allows for that to happen, as well as the subsequent reimbursement. So it's my recommendation that the Board of Education approve the income contract between Burnsville High School and the state of Minnesota, acting through its Board of Trustees of the Minnesota State Colleges and Universities on behalf of Inver Hills Community College, and authorize the Superintendent of IST 191 to execute that agreement.
Is there a motion to approve the PSEO contract?
So moved.
Moved by Director Anderson.
Seconded.
Seconded by Director Mickelson. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Yep. The final item on our agenda is a closed session, as permitted by Minnesota Statute 13D.03, to discuss labor negotiation strategy. Is there a motion to close the meeting at this time to discuss labor negotiation strategy?
So moved.
Moved by Director Alt.
Second.
Seconded by Director Saxi. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. The time is now 8:02, and we will move to the HR conference room to discuss labor negotiation strategy. We will return to our open meeting immediately following the closed session. However, please note that having no further agenda items after the closed session, we will not be returning to the dais upon completion of the meeting. Thank you, and board members, please make your way to the HR conference room.